Do you have anything? Do you have anything?
Oh, yeah. That's definitely a good thing. Yes.
It always has been. Joe or anybody else, so they're missing out.
Joe's in the back because he's working on something.
Okay.
Good morning Butterfield Trail Village. I hope everyone's doing good today. You all look so festive already. This is wonderful. So next week is Thanksgiving and I just want to take a minute to say I'm grateful and I'm thankful. Along with my coworkers, I think the staff is very grateful to be a part of Butterfield Trail Village. And I'm thankful for residents who participate and they want to be a part of our village family. A good example is Fay Edmondson because she provided us all summer with her beautiful floral arrangements. Thank you Fay. And then there's so many volunteers at Butterfield who make things happen. And we just want to recognize you and thank you for all of that. I just have a few things that will be on your December calendar I want to reach out and tell you about. Well, for November, this coming Monday at seven o'clock, we have a chorus of ukuleles. It's going to be so much fun. They're playing all types of songs and they'll close with Christmas tunes. Thirteen ukuleles. So it's going to be great, very entertaining. I hope you can be here for that. It's the Sequoia Ukulele Society. Okay, so December first through the sixteenth, we will hold a canned food drive for the Salvation Army. You'll have details of that in your calendar. I want to thank Kelly Sire who's made flyers and posters and we'll get those posted real soon. December third through the tenth, we're going to have a Salvation Army toy drive. And that did us December third through the tenth. And these toys are to be brand new if you would like to purchase one. Details of ages will be in your on your calendar information. And don't worry about wrapping, that'll be taken care of for you. All of this stuff will be dropped off at designated spots in the lobby. So we hope you can participate that to support those in need right here in our own community. If you're wondering, we will be running a bus on the seventh to the Singing Men of Arkansas, who will be performing at the First United Presbyterian Church in Springdale for their Christmas program. For those of you who missed the dementia seminar sessions last month, we'll show those on your in-house channel 1961 on Wednesday, the tenth. Same time, it'll be at ten thirty time in the morning for the first session. And then the second session will be shown at one thirty. Friday, the twelfth is the big Butterfield Village Christmas party. The theme is rocking around the Christmas tree. So I hope you all come dressed festive for that party. We're going to have a wonderful band who's been here before and you requested them to return and they're called the Pushpens. Tom Katz, who runs the guitar store, has put this wonderful band together and they'll be playing your favorite tunes from some fifties, sixties and seventies. So that'll be a great band to dance to. For those of you who did not know, we already have signup sheets. They're at the transportation desk momentarily. You can sign up for a reserved table or just individual tables, which we have plenty of to sit with new friends and neighbors. People were getting confused with the signup book when it was in the dining room with the Thanksgiving reservations. So once Thanksgiving is over, that book's going to go back to the dining room. And if you have any questions currently about those reservations, you need to see Tavon. Okay, Tuesday, the sixteenth, our Take Five was bumped one week, but we're still hosting our fabulous Take Five. And this time, we're going to have live entertainment with Alicia Patillo, who is a beautiful saxophonist. And she's got put together a really fun jazz combo and they'll be playing a lot of Christmas tunes that evening. And Michael and I decided on Friday, the nineteenth, we would like to host Holiday House Hop again. So we hope you all will sign up for that and we'll have different departure times for our Butterfield buses to come to our homes. And we're just going to have all kinds of great food and drinks and laughter and fun. So we just want to welcome you and I hope you can join us for that. Tuesday, the thirtieth, after the holidays, we're going to be starting to work on 2026. And I have a guest coming to give you information about an instructed water class, watercolor class here on campus. So if you'd like to try your hand at watercolor or get back to watercolor, if you've ever done it in the past, please join us for this informational meeting. And some other outings that we'll have will be Christmas-like tours. We're going to go to Topgolf. I'm going to see if I can get Kevin to join us and meet us up there. Hit some balls, have some food and some really fun. And believe me, you think you're outdoors, but they have heated bays. So you will not be cold. It's a lot of fun. And during our Arkansas L Trail, we're running a bus to Farmington High School, where the Arkansas Winds Community Concert Band will do their holiday performance. I apologize, I can't fit the Arkansas Winds full band in here anymore. They're they have like sixty or seventy members. So but they have have a concert scheduled at Farmington High School. So that's all I have. I want to wish you all a very, very blessed Thanksgiving. And I'm going to turn the meeting over to to Jennifer. Sorry about that, Jen.
Good morning. And first off, after Ricky's, I don't have as much going on. And also, I am so grateful for my job here and for the chance to work with everyone. And because of that, I'm always looking at how can I create and work on a better program? And I'm extremely excited about what we have going for 2026, already working on all of it. And the first part is getting everyone that's interested trained on the TRX training. You can sign up at the transportation desk. It's one-on-one. Also, if you worked with Carson, she was good, but not as thorough as Kasia. So don't hesitate to do two or three sessions to make sure that you really learn how to use it. Next week, you will find one also in the gym next to the pool. So if you do not want to walk to use it next to the lodge, just go to the pool. It'll be there in a week. But please get signed up. It's part it's part of a new initiative where we're creating a functional fitness gym in the space next to the equipment in the lodge gym. Each month, we're going to be introducing a new piece of equipment with why it's beneficial. Once we've trained and have a majority of you that wants to get involved knowing how to use each new piece, we will start doing a circuit training class so that you also always have supervision and kind of fellowship doing the classes. So please get signed up, start to learn it. I promise you will get a lot of benefit from these new things. Also, just yesterday, but I cannot keep a secret, I had a girl reach out and ask if I would do an internship program for the School of Public Health because she really wanted to get involved here. So we had a quick conversation and she's going to come on next semester and work on how we can create more support for people with Parkinson's, how we can start to develop that part of the program. So please start to look for that. We're going to work in the afternoons on how to design it. And then we'll be hosting meetings so that we can find out from you what we can do that will really serve you. So that goal is coming on for 2026 along with a lot of other really good programs. So anyway, very thankful for you all and excited for what we are going to be continuing to offer. And I don't know who's speaking next. Okay.
All right, good morning. I have several things. I know we just did this Monday night, but I do have a few changes since Monday night, or a few change, a few additional things since Monday night. You all got your monthly service fee increase letter in the mailboxes yesterday. And this is the second year in a row we've been able to trend that down. And we feel like, we feel very strongly that if things continue like they are, of course, we can't predict the political climate or whatever's happening in the out there. But if it continues like it is today, we feel very sure we can continue this trend down. And that is absolutely our goal. So please be patient with us on that. But more information to come, but we feel very good about where we're headed in the future and the ideas we have to help continue to trend that down. Next thing on the list, the question and answer. Thank you so much for the questions and the emails. And hopefully, I believe I've responded to everyone at this point. Sometimes it takes me a little time. I can get a couple of hundred emails a day and sometimes it takes me a little bit of time to get to the bottom of that list. But I believe as of this morning, I'm caught up on everything and we'll continue that. I was told that that's a very, much more effective method than trying to give information at the end of a town hall because you have the information in your hands and you can reference it. And we can be a little more detailed in the information because I can send it to Kim or I can send it to our board president or someone else to get information as we need. So thank you and please continue if you have any questions. Or if you prefer to have a meeting, I would be more than happy to set up a meeting and we can meet as long as you want to. You ask all the questions you want to ask about anything that you want to know and I'd be more than happy to do that. Just send Lisa an email or a call and we can set up a meeting. The as far as the assisted living expansion, we won't know really anymore until December, the sixteenth at the city council meeting. That happens on December, the sixteenth. Couple of other things we're looking at on the building is matching the stone. Several emails about that. We're working on a specific color. This color is kind of hard to match. They're supposed to send something today, so we're working on matching this stone color. And as I mentioned, Monday night, the second elevator was added. So that's in the plans now. Yesterday, we received information for the additional beds. We we applied for twenty-five additional beds and we already have thirty-two. That gives us fifty-seven, which gives us a little bit of room if because if we don't convert the current AL to IL, that that means we would need a total of fifty-five. We have fifty-seven, just as a little bit of a cushion. The cost for those beds, you don't have a bed tax on assisted living beds. It's a cost of $750 a year, whether you have seventeen beds or fifty-seven beds. So we went ahead and applied for twenty-five additional. The parking lot, the additional, the parking lot expansion has been approved again for the fourth time. So we have that pre-construction will start on that soon. I feel like we're to the point now where 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 everyone has approved it that needed to see it from the city. So we feel like that's going to happen. The covered parking and last year, we talked about a price increase for the covered parking and we've put that off until this year. So this year, we'll be going up from $35 to $50. And that will start in January. You know, we talked about that last year. We were waiting to do until the new parking lot was built. We were going to roll it all out together. But we're going to go ahead and do that in January of this year. I did have a meeting with the mayor. Mayor and Kim and Kelly was there also. And we talked about the all the questions that she had about, of course, the expansion of Joyce. She said there's no plans to expand Joyce. They have a different plan to for the new junior high that's going to be built. We had, she also said no plans to cut down our trees on Joyce. So one thing she did offer, which was was very nice is she wants to come here and she will do a question and answer session with you and we can get that scheduled and we'll let you know. So she would, she said it's kind of up to us in time. So we'll be getting that information out pretty soon. It may be after the first of the year. I'm sure she's very busy until the end of the year, but we'll be getting that information out very soon. Couple of things from the foundation. We'd like to thank the Foundation for the Raised Beds. If you've seen that going on, that's that's looking very nice. Great addition and the foundation is responsible for that. Also, the, let me see where I put my other. Oh, the foundation also is has bought a new low vision machine. And this replaces the one, if you've seen the one, I know several people use that. It's pretty old, pretty antiquated, the old machine. But this will replace that. And if you have any questions on how to use this, Rick Meyer has volunteered his time to show you how to use this machine. So it's here in the front if you want to see it after the meeting. But after this meeting, it will be in the Low Vision Library. So we thank the foundation for that very. Yes, sir. Okay, Rick says it'll be in the lobby. The Low Vision Machine will be in the lobby after the meeting. So if you want to come by and look and get a get an in-service on how to use that, he would be glad to show you. The other, the next trick, so I've got all kinds of notes here. So let me, let me go back here. The next tricks challenge, which is our plastic challenge, the next tricks challenge bins and posters are here and you will see them in several locations by December, the first. And so for more information on that, you can see Trish or Carol. Would y'all like to say anything about that or would like for me to say anything about that? There is a lot, there is a lot out there. The capital investment, some things that are going on by the end of the year that you will see. The front entrance, so something we've we've had issues with this over the last, well, probably since it's been there. But it gets so cold up there at the front entrance. So we're going to move the reception desk into the, do we call that the courtroom? Is that called the courtroom? In the courtroom. So you'll see that it'll have, we'll have a glass front and so it'll be open and and they'll be able to see. And so we'll then we'll move security out to be front-facing. And so all those changes will be happening by the end of the year. The Wi-Fi equipment and upgrade will be starting by the end of the year. They will, they were on-site as I found out just a few minutes ago. They were actually on-site this week. But they'll be back and we'll start that upgrade this by the end of the year. The special care entrance, if you've been back there, the carpet is old and it smells and it's ripped. So all that's coming out. We're going to replace the carpet with new flooring and the old wallpaper's coming down and we're going to paint that room back there. So that's been an eyesore for a long time. The also, the we're going to get a new bus. So the white bus will be replaced. If you've ridden on those buses, the the oldest one that that we do thousands and thousands of dollars worth of repair and maintenance every year will be replaced. We'll still have the two white buses, but we're getting a brand-new white bus. That should, I'm not sure if that'll be here by the end of the year, but if not, it won't be long. So that has been ordered as of yesterday. We are also making an adjustment hourly staff. We'll have a market adjustment. So I know a lot of you email and ask about that to make sure we're competitive. We're in a competitive pay range for all of our people. So there will be a salary adjustment for our hourly employees. The and and last but not least, on my news, is the North Atrium Elevator is up and running. So finally, yes, yes, yes. So that's all I'm going to say. I'm not going to jinx it. That's it on that, the elevator, not saying anything else. And so next, we have a, if you have any questions or comments for me, if you want to talk about anything, please, just like we do on Monday nights, please come see me after the meeting. But for now, we have a presentation for you, so.
Okay, while these brave souls are taking the stage, I want to thank them again for the time and the effort to create this live commercial for the purse effort. At this stage in our lives, sometimes the most valuable thing we possess is our time. And these people have given their time and talents. I know that I should introduce them, but in the interest of your time and their request to remain anonymous, we will simply offer our efforts this morning. And thanks to Kevin for allowing us this time at the town meeting. And now, Ms. June, you're on.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is June Colwell and I'm your friendly reminder. Last Monday at the forum meeting, we launched the Christmas Purse Effort to reward our employees. Well, the clock is ticking and we don't want you to forget. You know, here at Butterfield, forget forgetting can be an issue. We don't want to harass you with reminders, but I've been reminded for thirty-one years about this purse effort and it still sometimes slips up on me. We hope that you'll enjoy this friendly holiday reminder presented by some of your Butterfield neighbors. Clement C. Moore wrote, "Twas the Night Before Christmas" in eighteen twenty-three. But this is an updated two thousand twenty-five Butterfield version adapted by our friend Patty Stiles.
"Twas the night before Christmas, On the first day of Christmas, much you looked at me. Wait, it's not even Thanksgiving yet! When all through the house, Ow! It was a brick house! No! Butterfield is trimmed in stone, not brick! Not a creature was stirring, Not even a mouse! Three blind mice, three blind mice! No, not mice, squirrels! They are everywhere around here! The stockings were hung by the chimney with care, In hopes that our loved ones soon would be there. Chestnuts roasting on an open fire, Wrong again! At Butterfield, our fireplace is gas, And there are lots of old nuts sitting around swapping stories! The residents were nestled all snug in their beds, While visions of shooter plums danced in their heads. Fun glorious food, Hot sausage and mustard! Our kitchen staff feeds us very well, Even though we sometimes complain. And mine, her kerchief, And I and my tab Had just settled down for a long winter nap. Lullaby and goodnight, go to sleep, my old lady! We admit that at Butterfield, most of us turn in pretty early. When out on the lawn there arose such a clatter, I sprang from my bed to see what was the matter. Ouch! I stubbed my toe! Resident care can probably give you some help with that. Away to the window I flew like a flash tore open the curtains and threw up the sash. You broke them! Call maintenance, they can repair them, But you may need a work order. The moon on the breast of the new fallen snow Gave the luster of midday to objects below. A beautiful sigh, we're happy tonight, walking in a winter wonderland. You need to be up early at Butterfield to walk in the snow Because the removal begins early to keep us safe. When watching a wandering ice disappear, But a miniature van and eight tiny reindeer Upon the house top reindeer paws. Actually, at Butterfield, the van wears a stagecoach and horses. With a little old driver so lively and quick, I knew in a moment it must be Roger? When I got run over by a reindeer. At Butterfield, our speed limit is twelve miles per hour. More rapid than eagles his coursers they came, And he whistled and shouted and called him by name.
Now Nathan.
Now Cody.
Now Edelman, Lacy.
I'm Princess.
I'm Christie.
I'm Brendan and Tristan.
To the top of the porch.
To the top of the wall.
Now, dash away, dash away! Hurry up, y'all!
Working nine to five, what a way to make a living early. Getting by, there's no taking and no giving. Sometimes it seems that the requests, complaints and work orders never end.
As dry leaves hit the floor, the wild hurricane fly. When they meet with an obstacle, mount to the sky.
The autumn leaves blow by my window When autumn leaves start to fall. Our Butterfield grounds crew work overtime with those leaf blowers. So up to the housetop the coursers they flew With a sleigh full of toys and John Washington too.
And then in a twinkling, I heard on the roof the prancing and pawing of each little hoof.
As I drew in my hand and was turning around, Down the chimney, a stranger came with a bound.
Here comes Santa Claus, here comes Santa Claus.
Quick, call our twenty-four hour security team.
Good grief!
Relax! He was dressed all in fur from his head to his foot And his clothes were all tarnished with ashes and soot.
Working in a coal mine, going down, down, down. Don't worry, our housekeeping laundry can take care of that.
A bundle of treats he had flown on his back And he looked like a peddler just opening his pack.
One toy, toy for sale, it's going cheap!
Well, it may not be cheap, But you can use your five dollars in the bistro Or the on-campus store if you need something.
His eyes had a twinkle.
His dimples how merry.
His cheeks were like roses, his nose like a cherry.
His droll little mouth was drawn up like a bow.
And the hair on his head was as white as the snow.
Happy, 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 happy dog, Talking about things you used to do. Butterfield folks seem happy to talk and share with each other.
The stump of a pipe he held tied in his teeth And the smoke it encircled his head like a wreath.
Smoke gets in your eyes!
No smoking at Butterfield!
He had a broad face and a little round belly That shook when he laughed like a bowl full of jelly.
He was chubby and plump, a right jolly old elf.
And I laughed when I saw him in spite of myself.
Let's get physical, physical, move on to physical. Our exercise instructors offer lots of classes to get rid of that jiggle.
A wink of his eye And a twist of his head Soon gave me to know I had nothing to dread.
For everyone, turn, turn, turn. There is a season, turn, turn, turn. And a time for every purpose under heaven.
And when it's time to move to the next level of care here at Butterfield, We will have the support we need.
Nurses, social workers, CNAs.
Our friends.
The Christmas Purse is a special gift From the residents of Butterfield to the employees.
Every day they share their smiles, their kind words And offer much-needed assistance.
Whether it's a blood pressure check
A coffee from the bistro.
An incredible holiday buffet.
Or the beautiful, clean campus we all enjoy.
They are responsible. Please open your hearts and wallets And help us say thank you and Merry Christmas to these helpers.
He spoke not a word but went straight to his work.
He filled all the stockings then turned with a jerk.
And laying his finger aside of his nose and giving a nod, up the chimney he rose.
Hi-ho, hi-ho, it's off to work we go. La-la-la-la-la-la-la-la, hi-ho, hi-ho. There are over two hundred employees who work to keep us happy.
He sprang to his feet and to his team gave a whistle.
And away they all flew. He sprang to his sleigh and to his team gave a whistle, and away they all flew like the down of a thistle. But we heard him exclaim ere he drove out of sight. Happy Christmas to all and to all a good night. We wish you a Merry Christmas, we wish you a Merry Christmas, we wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
All right, Patty, you don't go away. Come up here. We want you all to know that she wrote this thing and directed it, and she used to do this with kids. Well, it's a whole lot worse with a bunch of old people like us. So she's done a great job. We want to thank you so much. Hey, this wasn't in the script. Thank you so much, Patty, for all of your great work. I just want you all to know, she's a little bit crazy, you know. Again, I would like to thank these courageous residents that were willing to step out of their comfort zone, try something new and different, and support the Christmas Purse. We now have a video that will allow you to meet some of our employees from behind the scenes and hear how much they appreciate the financial thank you that the Purse offers to them. Take it away, Nathan.
And when I started here, I told my other ladies, which they're all gone, that I was only going to stay five years, but my ladies turned out to be so wonderful that I ended up staying.
Yeah, there's a lot to like about Butterfield. My favorite thing is that I feel like I'm coming into a little community every single day, and it's kind of like its own little city or town, really get to know them really well, and it's good to come here every day to that.
I love working here because everybody's just so friendly and positive, and it's a nice little community overall.
I really enjoy the residents. They're very, they're very kind, and they have a really good attitude. I think that's my favorite part, is the residents.
I've loved the job, and the reason more than anything, loving this job is because of the people. I love the history, the stories, the background these people have, the things that they have gone through. It's just, it's uplifting, it's emotional to me, and it's very rewarding.
I love it. What I love most about Butterfield is that we get to have the benefits, there's too many benefits, and we get to have the access to the gyms, the pool, most of all, seeing all these residents giving us big smiles, greeting us every day.
Getting to know all the residents and all their family members, just seeing them, and then getting to know them and developing a friendship basically with them.
The people. After that, you know, I like working details, so I got a few experience about my job, but when I come in here, just do it like a touch.
Oh, I have been working here because the first one, the resident is very kind with me, my bosses, I don't have a problem with anybody. Yeah, I have a good team, the coworkers, yeah, yeah. All the benefits in my schedule, I love that.
I like the people I work with, and also working in the dining room, it keeps me fed. Yeah, just the overall like environment, like I really do enjoy being around the people that I'm with every day.
The diversity, being able to, we're just working on many different things, from PCs to appliances, plumbing, electrical, and just knowing that I'm making a difference for the residents and making their lives happy easier.
The environment, everybody is so friendly. When I started, of course, everybody, and everybody still is friendly, and there's a whole bunch of new faces everywhere.
What I think about the Christmas Purse is it means so much to me, not just to me, but my family, because around Christmas is the biggest time of the year and joy, and I'm thankful for all these amazing, beautiful residents here at Butterfield. Thank you for all you do for us, especially giving us love and care.
I never, in all the jobs I have done, not everybody get that, so when we got it, you would like, it's a blessing. It just brings joy, and you get to see other workers, they even cry, because we all have kids, and we all have different needs, and we could use it towards that. And it just feels, it feels good, and so us to repay that feeling, and that thankful that you all do that for us, the residents are so giving.
It just means that the residents really do care about what we do, and like helping, serving the residents, just taking care, like it really shows that they really do care about us, caring about them.
It's quite meaningful, actually, because holidays can be very stressful, and it does take a lot off of just the stress overall. And just want to say that we're so appreciative and grateful for every one of the residents here.
It's helped out a lot, especially that time of the year financially. It's helped put a little bit more food on the table for the kids, get the presents for kids, let's pay up a couple of extra bills, so it's helped out more than I could have
One thing is because it's the time when I started here, because I started in December. So when I got my first one is one year later, I started. But that one is so important for me, because that helped me for buying dress for my family for Christmas. So the other one is very different, because the other one let me do something different for my family each year.
I appreciate what the Christmas Purse does and what the residents at Butterfield do for the Christmas Purse. It has helped me personally to provide Christmas for my daughter and my family, of course. And, you know, last year, I had, during Christmas time, my washer went out, so I had to buy a new one, so the Christmas Purse actually helped me during that time.
Awesome for me, because I don't expect for that in Christmas, it's awesome, it's lovely. I don't have my quote for it, it's awesome for me, I'm grateful for that.
It's meant a lot. I'm a single mother, so it really helps me at Christmas, and it's been a blessing to me.
And it's a really nice injection into the holidays there, and it really allows us as employees to buy stuff for our kids or our families and other Christmas presents and anything else that we need around the holidays. There's always a lot that's going on and a lot to buy and a lot to spend on, so it means a lot, and it makes the holidays really special.
It means a lot, because it really alleviates a lot of stress about buying presents for like families and friends and stuff.
I mean, my wife's birthday is November 30th, and so the money usually comes, usually comes right there about that time, and so I can go to the jewelry store and get her a beautiful present for her birthday as well as Christmas, and she doesn't know about it. If I was to do it and use my debit card, then she would know, so it's a beautiful thing. Then also, there's always some little leftover, and I put it in my little coin, my stash. I got dollar bills and coins and stuff, and it's, that money is saved up to where I can get enough money to buy steaks for the whole family and that my son-in-law cooks steaks and I let him know where it comes from.
All of us residents at Butterfield, we belong to a unique, friendly community. Please allow us to remember that there are a lot of people, a lot of people here supporting us in that endeavor. Thank them on December the 7th, our official closing date for the Christmas Purse. Thank you for your time in trouble this morning. Thank you, Kevin, for giving us part of your time today, and certainly Kelly for bringing us into the digital age. Thank you, have a good day.